This is the public hearing of the Committee to Hold regarding Bills Number 160170, 160171, 160172, 160173, 160174, 160175, 160176, and Resolutions Number 160180. Mr. Stitt, please read the titles of the bills and resolution.
Bill Number 160170, in ordinance to adopt a capital program for the six fiscal years 2017 through 2022 inclusive. Bill Number 160171, in ordinance to adopt the fiscal 2017 capital budget. Bill Number 160172, in ordinance adopting the operating budget for fiscal year 2017. Bill Number 160173, in ordinance amending Section 19-1806 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Authorization of Realty Use and Occupancy Tax to further authorize the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia to impose a tax on the use or occupancy of real estate within the School District of Philadelphia under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 160174, in ordinance amending Section 19-1801 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Authorization of Tax to further authorize the Board of Education of the School District of Philadelphia to impose a tax on real estate within the City of Philadelphia, all under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 160175, in ordinance amending Chapter 19-1500 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Wage and Net Profits Tax by revising certain tax rates under certain terms and conditions. Bill Number 160176, in ordinance amending Title 19 of the Philadelphia Code entitled Finance Taxes and Collections by adding a new chapter, 19-4100, entitled Sugar Sweetened Beverage Tax under Certain Terms and Conditions. Resolution Number 160180, resolution providing for the approval by the Council of the City of Philadelphia of revised five-year financial plan for the City of Philadelphia covering fiscal years 2017 through 2021 and incorporating proposed changes with respect to fiscal year 2016, which is to be submitted by the Mayor to the Pennsylvania Intergovernmental Cooperation Authority, the authority pursuant to the intergovernmental cooperation agreement authorized by an ordinance of this council approved by the Mayor on January 3, 1992, Bill Number 1563-A, by and between the City and the authority.
Thank you, Mr. Stitt. Today we continue the public hearing on the Committee to Hold to consider the bills read by the clerk that constitute proposed operating and capital spending measures for fiscal 2017, a capital program, and a forward-looking capital plan for fiscal year 2017 through fiscal 2022. Today we'll hear testimony from the following city departments: Revenue Department, Border Revision of Taxes; we will hear revenue tax bills, departmental callbacks, that will include pre-K, Community Schools, MDO, to discuss rebuild. First person to testify, Mr. Stitt, is...
Frank Breslin.
Thank you very much. Good morning.
Good morning.
Please proceed.
Good morning, Council President Clark and members of City Council. My name is Frank Breslin. I'm the Commissioner for the Department of Revenue. Seated here with me today are Marissa Waxman, First Deputy Revenue Commissioner, and Michelle Bethel, Deputy Revenue Commissioner for Water. Also here today is the rest of my leadership team. To support the City and School District of Philadelphia, the Department collects more than $4.35 billion annually in taxes, water and sewer charges, and other fees and fines. Last year's collections exceeded budget projections, and fiscal year 16 collections are on target to meet projections. In fiscal year 17 and beyond, the Department will utilize its budget to help people pay on time, take appropriate action against those that fail to pay, and enroll eligible Philadelphians in tax and water relief programs. You have our written testimony, which outlines our expanded and new plans for fiscal 17. However, I would like to take a moment to highlight just a few initiatives. E-billing will be introduced in fiscal year 17 with an initial focus on water bills. As customers enroll in e-billing, we anticipate savings on postage and mailing materials. The Department will increase the frequency of delinquent bills sent to taxpayers in fiscal year 17. A 2015 pilot and IRS research indicates that increasing the frequency of delinquent bill mailings leads to increased payments. A new data warehouse and case management system will be implemented in fiscal year 17. This system will be used to leverage city, state, and IRS data and conduct more detailed and accurate analysis of taxpayer information. The system will allow for increased collection of delinquencies. The Department will continue to provide relief to homeowners and residential water customers. Today, nearly a quarter million Philadelphia households receive $100 million in tax relief annually through programs like Homestead and Loop, as well as longstanding programs like tax and water discounts for senior citizens. The Department also supports efforts to increase the number of Philadelphians claiming the federal earned income tax credit, with over 17,000 tax returns prepared for free at city-sponsored locations this year. The proposed FY 2017 budget allows the Department to meet its mission of collecting tax and non-tax revenue due to the City and School District of Philadelphia, and we respectfully ask for your consideration of this budget. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today and your continued support of our operations. My team and I are available to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. On your details in Section 16, Page 4, shows a $413,000 increase in Class 100 funds, which is attributed to taxpayer services enhancement. Can you tell me about that, please?
Yes. We're increasing the number of tax reps. We're also increasing the number of tax enforcement, our tax enforcement staff. So, we want to be able to increase and improve our taxpayer services. So, we'll have more reps downstairs in intake and on the phones to be able to improve customer service.
Oh, so you shortened the lines. Okay.
Yep.
I was hoping you were going to say that you were going to lower taxes. That would be a great enhancement for a taxpayer, but no such thing. All right. So, Page 7, testimony. Talk about the sugary tax, and I was actually going to hold this question until this afternoon. But you referenced it in your testimony, and the initiatives of the five-year plan would be seriously impacted. And my question is not so much, you know, what would happen if it was not enacted. My question is what would happen if the numbers that were reflected in terms of the actual taxes were to change? Since I've been here, it's rare that a proposed budget goes through council and is adopted, the same as it was submitted by the administration. So, has, and I guess this really would fall in your department, but there'd been an analysis on the various rates: three cents, two and a half, two, one and a half, one, half cent, quarter cent. Would that not fall within your department? And only, again, I only bring this up because...
It would not. We participated in the analysis at the different rates, but I think that it would be more, that question would be more appropriate for this afternoon's testimony.
Okay. So, why, is there a reason why you have it in your testimony? Have you referenced the impact?
Well, it definitely would impact our department, and depending on however the rate or however it is changed, then we would have to adjust accordingly.
In your department?
In our department. I mean, we're responsible for the processing, we're responsible for the compliance, for the collection. So, depending on what the rate, a rate change could change, could possibly change our compliance strategy. It could have other factors. So, it's something we would have to take back and discuss and see how that would affect us, because we do have position and programming and things built into our budget to support the tax.
So, the tax will give you more revenue, therefore more employees to enforce and collect the tax?
Well, I think we've built the budget based upon, I think the budget has been based upon the assumption of the tax and at the existing rate.
Say that again.
I think the budget has been created based on the assumption of the tax at the prevailing rate. So, any changes to that could change...
Your budget?
Yes.
In terms of your employees and the people you would need to hire to enforce? Okay. So, this is solely relating to your particular department?
Yes.
All right. But if there were not a tax, then it would not impact your existing department structure?
No.
Okay. All right. I just want to make sure, get a little clarity, because you referenced it. Okay. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Just had some questions, looking at your budget detail. On Page 46, I noticed that for FY 16 and in FY 17 requests, there's a vendor to be determined for EITC tax preparation and marketing services. I guess my question, considering the amount of information that has gone out through this body, we did not have a vendor who was doing the marketing of EITC, or we're using multiple vendors?
Hi, I'm Marissa Waxman, First Deputy Revenue Commissioner. We did have vendors for this current tax season, the one that just ended, and we're assessing how things went, both with our nonprofit partners who provided the free tax prep, as well as our partners who did the marketing and community outreach. So, we'll be looking at whether or not we're going to extend those contracts and renew them, or if, based on, once we have a sense of how this past tax season went, whether there's any adjustments needed. So, there were vendors for last year. We anticipate using vendors again this coming year.
And who were some of those vendors?
So, our nonprofit partners were the Campaign for Working Families, as well as Pathways PA, and Pathways PA was partnered with SABHA, and so they did the free tax prep. And for the marketing and community outreach, we used two firms, A, B, and C, Creative Intelligence, as well as Community Marketing Concepts.
Mr. President, in your testimony, Page 7, in addition to the comment you made regarding the sugary drink tax, you also made reference to the possible alteration to the Sterling Act. Can you give some perspective on how that may impact the city budget for next year and going forward?
Sure. I'm going to call the law. Do you want the legal background on the Sterling Act?
I have some understanding, but I just want to get a look, a quick legal review, and then also what the financial impact may be.
Good morning, Council President Clark and members of City Council. My name is Frank Piva. I am the Chief Deputy for Tax Litigation. Could you please repeat your question?
Yeah. My question was on Page 7 of Mr. Breslin's testimony. It was referenced to the possible state legislature altering the Sterling Act as a, in particular, in reference to requiring non-resident wage tax be remitted back to the home jurisdiction of the community working. And my question is, is that current legislation that's moving through the House and Senate, as well as what type of financial impact would they have, would that have on the city?
Well, currently, I do not know the status of that litigation. That litigation would be very damaging to the city's FISK, to enable the city to lose their super credit. Basically, what happens right now, we have non-residents who come to work in Philadelphia. They pay us the entire wage tax. Under this proposal, we would, they would get a credit against the wage tax for what they would be due their local jurisdiction, which currently, the local jurisdiction doesn't get anything.
Right.
So, this would be devastating. As to what the dollars are, I haven't seen any calculations. I know it would be significant, and we're talking significant, probably over $100 million, at least.
And I think, I mean, we haven't done a detailed analysis on this. It's ongoing as information comes out. So, I see some conversations about the wage tax itself being unconstitutional, and so that's a little different than just talking about the, a piece of the wage tax. But I think in either case, you know, obviously, we really rely on the wage tax. It's the biggest part of collection. So, that would be devastating for us to lose the wage tax in whole, or even in part, even to lose the non-resident portion of the wage tax would be, it would be devastating.
Well, I think it's important that we have, I guess, some additional information. The question is whether, how is the administration monitoring this? I mean, is it just a piece of legislation that just got introduced that's still in committee? Is it out of committee? Because that, I mean, this is something that we should be really concerned about because of the dynamic between Harrisburg and Philadelphia, having legislation that could say to legislators who are outside of the city or other parts of the Commonwealth, that portion of your tax that you're paying to the City of Philadelphia should stay within your home jurisdiction or go back to your home jurisdiction is something that they would benefit but would be a detriment to the City of Philadelphia.
Councilman, at this point, the legislation hasn't been introduced. There's just a lot of grumblings about it, and so we haven't seen the exact language to be able to evaluate it further.
So, it's more so that you're monitoring? Because when I hear possible state legislation, my thought is that this legislation's already been introduced and it's on a track. So, this is, you just heard some perspective that this legislation may be introduced?
Yes. And in fact, in prior years, it seems almost every other year, they introduce something similar to this. It usually dies, it has died in the past, but it's something we are concerned about.
Okay. All right. I have another question. One of the things that I've been doing since coming into council is work with a number of community development corporations around the city. I've had a chance to tour various CDCs, and one of the challenges that a number of the community development corporations have is how they can navigate the process regarding the CDC tax credit. And so, the challenge is how do they identify corporations that have the tax liability that could participate with that community development corporation? And although there's a lottery for the process in order to get in, unless they already have a corporation that they already know has a tax liability, what often happens is that it get, they go through the lottery process, they get selected, and then they think some of the businesses they do work with or have relationships with have a tax liability, and then find out they do not. And so, some of the CDCs don't have the ability of actually going through the program. So, is there any better way? I know there's some issues in reference to providing information in a public way regarding information regarding corporations, but is there a better way that we can help in the matchmaking process?
One of the, I understand the challenge, and one of the restrictions we have is the fact that we can't release confidential tax information. So, we can't give that information out as to which corporate entities, which business entities would have that level of business income and receipts tax liability. I'd be happy to, you know, we'll sit with our team and kind of brainstorm if there's a way that we can assist in that process, but I can't think of one that comes to mind right now.
Well, my time is up, and I do have some other questions, but maybe there's a way of informing the corporations that do have that tax liability that this is an option? So, you're giving the information to the corporations as opposed to releasing that information to community development corporations?
Yeah. Also, I want to point out that, you know, recent legislation allows that to be split between two partners.
Well, I...
Yeah. I'm sure you're aware of that.
I'm aware of that, but it's still the challenge.
So, that was an original attempt to make it easier for the CDCs to be able to find a partner, but I realize it's still, in some cases, a challenge to find a business that has that level of BERT liability.
But even putting something, even going out with the tax bills, the BERT bills, there may be a way of including information regarding the CDC tax credit that you're sending out to various businesses, and they may take the onus upon themselves to participate, because I think many probably don't even know about it, let alone, and they may be willing to participate.
Yeah. We could certainly assist in getting the word out to potential business partners. We could do that.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
Good morning. I just had a couple of questions, and Commissioner, we had actually spoken about this before, and I wanted to revisit this conversation a little bit about one of my constituents who paid his tax bill, his real estate tax bill, at the wrong window. And he was already in danger of being, you know, going to sheriff's sale. So, he came into town, he paid half, the amount that was due, I think it was like $5,000 or something like that, and his house was sold anyway because he apparently paid at the wrong window, he was told afterwards. And so, I have a great concern about the way we operate in terms of collecting revenue and that, you know, all of our systems aren't really designed to be as customer-friendly as we would like for them to be. I know that when we spoke about this before, you said that you had resolved these issues, and I'd like for you to go into some detail to talk about that. And also, I noticed that in your mission statement, it states that your duty or your mission is to collect tax revenue as promptly and efficiently by increasing on-time payments and decreasing delinquency. So, I'd like for you to talk a little bit about, you know, the systems that we have in place, and how can we, how can we be helpful to you? Is there something that we should be doing that can be more helpful to you to make sure that these kinds of things don't happen, that we are customer-friendly, and that people can pay their taxes, or whatever they have to pay to the City of Philadelphia, and it's processed appropriately and correctly, and we don't have these kinds of mess-ups? Again, because it's a huge problem, as you know, unraveling these kinds of things.
Yeah. One of the things that I'm very conscious of and is a high priority is taxpayer services. So, we really want to make it as easy as possible for taxpayers to pay their taxes. And there's multiple reasons for that. One, it's our business, and, you know, when we interact with a taxpayer, we want that to be a good customer experience.
Sure.
And we want it to be, and it's the opportunity, it's the image that a taxpayer's going to leave with of the City of Philadelphia. But, so, we're doing things to improve taxpayer services. We're bringing in more staff to reduce wait times, as I referenced. We are bringing in, we're in the implementation of a new cashiering system, which will help us process checks quicker. We've brought a new queuing system into our intake system, and for anyone who hasn't seen that system, it's really worth visiting the concourse of MSB. Taxpayers can essentially make an appointment from their handheld device or from a computer and come in, or when they walk in, they sign in in the queuing system, and they're, they now know what their approximate wait time is. They can leave and get a text message when to return, so that makes it much more convenient. If it is, we're trying to reduce wait times, but if it's an extended wait, they can actually leave and return. If they do it remotely, they know what time to show up. So, we've also improved our phone system to reduce wait times. We're also looking at, always looking at our messaging to taxpayers, and we're also in the process of improving and upgrading our webpage. And I left out, but it's a key initiative, we're also working on improving e-services so that customers don't have to come in to see us, so that if they want to pay remotely, they can do it electronically, and we just, we're able to get the price of an electronic check, e-payment, down to zero. So, there's no cost for someone to pay electronically, and one of the great advantages is, you know, they get confirmation that it's received. And so, so that goes back to the misapplied payment. I mean, people, if they can and they pay electronically, they actually dictate where the payment is going and get a receipt back electronically that shows that the money was processed how they intended.
So, one of the issues that I'm having is that, as you speak about the improvements that you've made, it sounds very vague. And so, when we say, you know, we've improved this, there's no data that's telling me, you know, where we were, let's say, last year at this time, and where we are now, and what we've done to improve it. And so, for example, when we say we've improved wait time, you know, and phone service, what was the wait time before? You know, was it two hours that I was waiting on the phone, and now it's one hour?
No, no, we do...
No, I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
No, my comment just being that we do monitor that. There's a weekly report. We monitor wait times on the phones. We compare them year to year. We're constantly trying to improve those wait times. During our busiest season, which just passed, our tax season, our wait times were below 10 minutes, often in some weeks below five minutes. So, we were very pleased with that. That's compared to wait times that were 20 to 30 minutes in past years. Now, that didn't all happen overnight. That's been incremental progress over the years. I'm not trying to say that all of these things have happened, clearly not since January when I've been here. These have been things that have been going on and have been improvements, and so we're tracking that. So, we track those customer service initiatives. We just, over this past tax season, did customer service surveys. So, we had staff downstairs, in the concourse, in the lines, doing surveys, and we're accumulating all that data. We took where taxpayers wanted us to, did not want to be anonymous, and left us names and contact information. We're actually getting back to them about their comments. So, we're really taking taxpayer services seriously.
Very good.
We have, you know, the queuing system is brand new, the cashiering system is coming on, phone system was like approximately a year ago. So, this is a process, and we just, you know, I hope that every year I can come in front of you and say that it's better than the year before.
We hope so, too. Let me ask you, if I owe the City of Philadelphia $10,000, as an example, I don't owe the City $10,000, but if I did, and I came down to revenue and I had $2,000 and wanted to make a payment arrangement, what would I be told?
It would depend on the circumstances. We would look at your account and determine the type of delinquency. You know, it depends on what tax it is. We would look at your history, and then we would make a determination whether that was a, whether we could put you into a payment agreement. And the reason I say that, and it is one thing that came out of our last discussion, and I've talked to my deputy for taxation, and we're looking at all of the payment agreement criteria, to just revisit it and see if it's criteria that really makes sense, to assure that it's not something we've just been doing it that way for a long time, and we're continuing to do it. But there are some cases where, I mean, where taxpayers come in for an agreement, and the terms that they are asking for are not acceptable to the Department, and that may be...
What does that mean, it's not acceptable? Is there a matrix that would tell me, that any one of us could look at and say, well, you qualify for a payment arrangement based on A, B, C, D, and E? Or because you were, you know, you broke three previous agreements, you're ineligible? Or is, is there something that's concrete, or is this something that's arbitrary, or, you know, a determination of the supervisor, or, you know, someone who's on duty that, on duty that day? And, you know, depending on if I'm having a great day, I might give you an arrangement, and if I'm not having such a good day, then, you know, you're just, you know, we don't want to hear it.
It's a little bit of both, and that's why we're looking at it now, too. So, it's a little bit of there's, there are general criteria, and then it's subject to supervisor or manager approval. And not all of the, that approval criteria is not set in stone. So, we're, that's what we're looking at right now, to see what that criteria is, if it makes sense, and then if we can have more uniform criteria for the approval at higher levels.
Okay. I'll come back around. I have some more questions, but I think that having something that is uniform is absolutely crucial, so that there isn't any, you know, there's a payment arrangement made for Mark, but Cindy can't have one.
Yeah.
It has to be uniform.
And I didn't refer to OOPA specifically, but for any of the owner-occupied payment agreements, there is a, there is specific criteria.
Okay. Thank you. I'll come back.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Dow.
Thank you, Council President. Good morning.
Good morning.
I have a couple of questions, and I want to start out with the big pieces first, and that is, the total value of the real estate in Philadelphia according to OPA is roughly $134 billion. And that amount has stayed the same in '14, '15, and '16. Do you think it's reasonable that that amount, and by the way, the real estate market that I'm familiar with has gone up at least 3%, 4% each year, which means we didn't collect a lot of revenue? Do you think it's reasonable going forward that we could expect the growth to be at least 2% per year over the next five years, which would give us about $550 million more in revenue?
I, you know, that's really not a question for revenue as much as a question for OPA. I'm not versed in real estate values.
Right.
And we rely on their assessed values come into revenue, and essentially, we take the tax rate, do the math, generate, create a bill, and then it's our responsibility to collect what's the result of those bills. And then it's our responsibility to collect what's the result of those bills.
Okay. Let's skip to something else for a second. Delinquency is one of my favorite topics. You know that. Including water and sewer, we're up to about $700 to $750 million. And water and sewer is like $125 to $150 of delinquencies. And I know we're working on a program for the real estate taxes, which are like $336, and the water and sewer, which are close to 500. We're working on an idea on how to collect that. The other question though is the BERT taxes that are like $136 million and the commercial trash that's $32 million. Do we have programs on how we're going about collecting those monies?
We do. We do. We have a collection strategy for those taxes. I think the challenge that we face with the business income and receipts tax specifically is that there's, the challenges in collecting from businesses that are no longer active. So we have, you know, really good enforcement tools for an active business. And that's why we realize it's very important to identify the delinquencies early and act on them early. But built into those delinquency figures that you're referencing are businesses that have been out of business for a long time. They could be corporations where there's, you know, there's no money left in the corporate entity. So it's very difficult. I mean, we even have a process. It depends. BERT tax is difficult because we really can't go after the owners. If it's wage tax or an agency type of a tax, then we do have a process where we look to see if we can go after the responsible parties for that corporate entity and go after them. So there is a strategy, and I think we've been really effective utilizing Cal revocation on active businesses. And I always footnote that, that, you know, our, our goal is not to close businesses, but our, our, our goal is to use that enforcement tool to get them to pay. And that's been really effective in the last few years that we've been using it. We've also been using sequestration with great, with great results. And we're, I think our case management system is really going to help us better identify how to attack some of these delinquencies.
Well, I thought the list that we were given was a cleansed list of the original $1.8 billion that we were told by the Controller's Office. And now we're down to $7, $750. And I thought that list represented what's actually potentially collectible. Are you saying that a lot of the BERT taxes aren't?
Potentially collectible in terms of its age. So none of the other factors. So it has been, what's, so what's in that list, I believe, first, you're getting accounts that we really, we are getting paid and they're compliant, but they're delinquent. So they're compliant by our definition. They're in a payment agreement or some other status. They may be under appeal. They could be in bankruptcy. So there's some action that's preventing us, they're in payment agreements. There's some action that's preventing us from doing anything further. We consider them compliant, but they're in that delinquency. Then also, there's the fact that we're saying they're collectible because of their age. So they're within the statute of limitations, but that does not mean that the business is still active. They could be defunct. The assets could have been liquidated.
So do you have an estimate on the BERT tax of $136 million, what you think is realistically collectible?
I don't have, I don't have that number today.
Is that something you can get for us?
We could definitely do some analytics of that receivable and give you a better idea of what we think is collectible.
And is that receivable saleable? Or can we monetize that receivable and sell it?
I don't know that. I don't know.
So there are companies that buy receivables that we can get the cash for and let them do the collection?
Yeah. I don't know the answer if we could.
What about the commercial trash that's $32 million?
Commercial trash, we have just started, that's relatively new to the department. We just took collection of that over a few years ago from the Streets Department. We've been making great improvements, I think, in collections there. We just started sending that out to collection agencies. It's leanable, which, that's very good for us. Yeah, that's great. So we're, you know, we're making sure that the liens are out there on it. We're also working with financial institutions that are partnering with us that if there are mortgages on those properties and we have a lien, that they definitely don't want their interest jeopardized. So they're either working with their customer to get payment to us or in some cases, they're actually paying it on behalf of their customers and then going after the customers. So that just, that actually just started, just piloted this calendar year. And we, so we really, we're going to try to roll, we only did it with one institution. We're going to be rolling that out. We think that'll really help with that delinquency.
One last question for this round. We bill $103 billion roughly of real estate. So that at our rate of 1.4, our collections are about 1.4 billion roughly we bill?
Yes.
And today, what is our collection rate versus the delinquency rate on real estate taxes?
In the first year of the, in the first year, we collect 94%.
94. So just to clarify, the 6% we don't collect is about 84 million?
That sounds about right.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. And it's still morning, good morning.
Good morning.
And I asked some of these questions before, and I gave you a heads up. I was going to ask them again.
Okay. So I should be ready, right?
Yeah, you should be ready. Couple of quick things though. And I think Dom, Councilman Dom covered it a little bit, but on the receivables end, how are we progressing in out-of-town real estate owners who are delinquent? And with the state regs isolating abilities to, to capture some of that stranded revenue?
Okay, so we just started piloting that project in the current fiscal year. We've done liens in two, two counties. So we've done it in Montgomery and I believe Delaware County. And the reason we're kind of going slow, first of all, it was a long process, a long legal process to, we had to go through to get all of the authority and familiar with the process. But now what we're doing is we're going into.
I'm sorry, for the record, how much is that receivable? What is that universe?
We'll get that for you. So what we're doing is we started in two counties placing liens. And the reason, and we're doing it very small. I have the numbers, but it's, it's somewhere, I think, under 40 properties that we've done.
So this is like a beta test?
It is, because one, we have to learn how, each county is a little bit different for placing these judgments. And so we have to learn the process, learn the costs, and we're doing that in each county. The other reason is we kind of had a pilot project with a vendor who helped us to identify these other locations. Because we don't necessarily have the, if, if I own a property in Philadelphia and I'm delinquent, but I also reside, own property in Bucks County, Philadelphia Department of Revenue, we don't necessarily know that. So we've worked with a vendor who's helped us identify these properties outside for our delinquents. And that was just a pilot project that started with 1,000 properties. So we've decided that this is, we want to move forward with this.
What are your initial findings? What has been the result? Is it, are we long far enough to see what might be out of this sampling, a foreshadow of things to come? Have we done any, if you could get me that number and the number of the total universe we're talking about?
Yeah, so the total number.
Hi. So for the real estate delinquency by mailing address category, we found that there are about 6% of accounts that list a non-Pennsylvania address as their mailing address. There are another 7% of accounts that list a Pennsylvania but not Philadelphia address as their address. And then the remainder are either the property itself or an alternative address within Philadelphia. So that's 88% of the properties and represents 90% of the amount due. But as the commissioner stated, there may be some instances where the mailing address for a property is in Philadelphia, but the owner still has a location outside the city. And that's what the outside vendor helps us find out.
Let me rephrase the question. How much money is that?
How much money is that? So there's $16.7 million owed by folks where the mailing address is not Pennsylvania. That's principal interest penalty and other. There's another 17 million that is owed by properties where the mailing address is Pennsylvania but other than the city of Philadelphia.
So that universe and?
So add that together and it's about 33 million.
And in your opinion, your professional opinion, is that a real receivable or is it a stranded receivable? Uncollectible? And your rough guess?
I think that's a real receivable.
Okay, so that's, that's, that's real money. So again, are any of your preliminary beta tests coming back? What is, what is, what are the tea leaves or actually the numbers telling you?
Yeah, we have had, I have the numbers here, but we've had, it's new and it's small volume of properties, but we've already had taxpayers coming in and paying. So the indication is that this is an effective tool. And we've also had taxpayers, we have taxpayers that have paid in full and taxpayers that have come into payment agreements. And I think it's, I think it's effective. And I think it's surprising to taxpayers when they find out that there is a lien against their non-Philadelphia property for these delinquencies.
Well, that's a, that's a good thing. We've been talking about this for a couple of years, President. And I'm glad to see we are at least moving in that direction. Predictive dialer system, how are we doing on that? Or is that in?
Predictive, outbound calling?
Yes.
We have not pursued outbound calling. Instead, we've been relying on collection agencies to essentially do that work for us. We, that's kind of a shift, I think, from our initial collection strategy. But we made a decision, at least at this point, not to make the investment in equipment to do that ourselves. That it was, it was better for us, more efficient for us to use collection agencies to do that.
So let me ask you this. Okay, shifting gears. Who are our top three institutional receivables? Such as PHA, do they owe us money? There were a couple of years where the water bill was not paid. And on government properties, those kinds of potential revenues were not paid. Do we, are we categorizing big institutions and, and if so, who are the top three big ticket?
We have looked at those for water and tax and are actually investigating the receivables to determine which receivables are owed and which ones are not. And then initiating collection action on the ones that are actually owed. I don't have with me the top three, but we can get that to you.
So I'm going to ask you to provide that to the chair. Couple of years back, we were shocked to find out who actually owed us money. And, and what was truly ironic was they don't play when it comes to their money. And so we want, we believe turnabout is fair play. And before we go seeking any other taxes, we should collect the ones that are due us, particularly from people who can't run. And so I'd like to see that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Marissa Brown.
Good morning and thank you very much.
Good morning.
If we could start off by the women on each side of your table stating who they are, who they are and their role in the department.
Hi, I'm Marissa Gorn Waxman, First Deputy Revenue Commissioner.
Good morning. I'm Michelle Bethel. I'm the Deputy Revenue Commissioner for the water side.
For the water side, okay. I could not hear clearly your response to Councilwoman Bass's question regarding how citizens can pay online. Does revenue charge a fee for those citizens who desire to pay online?
No. Just recently, we were able to get the fee waived. So there's no longer a fee for residents who want to pay electronically through e-check, which is a very easy and secure method of paying electronically. So that's totally free.
Okay. And so what about the water department?
It's the same.
Oh, it's the same now for the water department?
Correct, correct.
So there's been a change?
Yes, there's been a change, yes.
Since, since water came to testify?
Yes. The e-check went free in April.
Okay. All right. So was that due to a new contractor or to you all appealing to the contractor to make a claim that if we want to move to be a paperless society, they need to help us get with the program?
Yeah, it's something we were working on with the contractor for some time and it just happened in April.
Who makes decisions about contractors and revenue, about subcontractors and revenue? Who makes those decisions ultimately?
About the contractors and revenue?
About who you hire to, to collect fees.
Well, the, the contract that we're talking about, the electronic payments, is actually, I believe, an OIT contract. But we participate in, because it affects revenue to such a great degree, we participate in that jointly.
Pull the mic a little closer, please.
Yes.
So that means that you're at the table and you participate in the decision-making process about who ultimately secures those contracting opportunities?
Revenue does, yes.
Okay. ABC, tell me more about them.
The, the media firm?
Yes.
Sure. So A, B, and C is a firm that we utilized for the EITC project. They were partnered with Community Marketing Corporation, which is a MBE firm to do the community outreach portion. And A, B, and C did a lot more of like the micro website and a lot of the materials and things like that.
Are they local?
So they have an office in Philadelphia.
Who's they? Which one?
A, B, and C and CMC. Both firms are local.
They have an office in Philadelphia?
Correct. I believe A, B, and C is over at 15th and Walnut. And I forget where CMC is, but we can certainly provide that to you.
Okay, that would be helpful. That's it for now, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. One quick question. I think maybe a couple of years ago, we passed the law. Some people thought that we didn't need to actually enact the law, that we had the authority, but we passed the law anyway. So essentially, we were finding at the tail end of the AVI program, we were finding that there were a significant number of property owners in the city of Philadelphia that had minimal delinquencies, but they own properties outside of the city of Philadelphia. And we authorized the ability for the city to place a lien on all of their portfolio. Remember that?
Yes, that is the.
I think we had a name for it. I can't remember.
Yeah, Act 93 was the, is, is, what we were talking about previously is where if you have a delinquency on a property in Philadelphia, but you own real estate within the state of Pennsylvania, other real estate within the state, we could actually transfer that lien to that other property.
How are we doing on that?
And we're, we're working, that's the one that we're piloting right now. We've done it on a small number of properties in two counties within Pennsylvania. The results are very promising and the plan is for full implementation in fiscal year 17.
17, okay. All right, just popped in my mind, I remember. Okay. Can you say you're only, we're doing a pilot program now?
Right now, we're doing, we're finishing up a pilot, yes.
How many, how many property owners are we?
Memory, 62.
62?
We did 62 properties so far in two counties.
Okay, all right. Okay, can you keep us abreast of that? Because the whole notion was it was going to incentivize them to pay their taxes. I'd like to see if that was successful. But if we go outside of the state, we have to be subject to the other lien holders within that particular municipality or state. Is that my understanding?
That I'm not sure.
Or do we not have the authority to go outside of the state?
Council President, with respect to Act 93, even within Pennsylvania, the lien that we have here in Philadelphia,
Right.
when it's transferred into the other jurisdiction, say Bucks County, it no longer is considered a lien. Instead, it's considered a judgment.
Okay.
So it will be behind Bucks County's municipal liens
Right.
and other judgments that are ahead in, in time.
Right.
So basically, it acts as, as if it was a judgment when it's transferred out of Philadelphia into the suburban jurisdiction.
No, we should be in line. The question is, well, what we saw, and I know it was a small snapshot, which is what brought us to, what brought it to our attention, that we were finding that these people were paying their taxes in the other counties and not paying them in Philadelphia County because our collection process. County because our collection process was sorely lacking in, in terms of the aggressive nature.
Yeah, and how quickly we brought things to sheriff's sale, vis-à-vis other jurisdictions. And that has improved greatly over the past few years.
I'm getting some of the calls, I know we're being a lot more aggressive.
Right now, what we're seeing, and this is in its infancy, because there were some delays with the modernization of the liens with the courts, but we're seeing around a ten percent collection rate right now.
Okay.
So, you put out a hundred liens, ten of them will get paid in at least in a six month period. We'll see as time goes on whether that ten percent increases, but that's been our initial, um, observation so far.
Okay, all right, thank you. Um, Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Um, wanted to follow up on, um, some questions that you had, um, talked about in reference to some other council members, and I'm curious in reference to the coordination in, between, um, your office and OPA and the KAMA system. Uh, from testimony yesterday, mine is saying that KAMA is gonna provide a lot of opportunities in reference to going forward and doing a much better process with assessment. What's been your interaction with Rev, I mean, with OPA in reference to KAMA and better coordination between departments?
Yeah, our, our department and the Office of OPA has, uh, regular, uh, regular meetings. So, there's regular communication between the departments. It's a standing meeting, happens, um, I believe it's every two weeks. Not a meeting I'm in, but I see the, the staff and, uh, so there's, there's very good com- communication between the departments, and I've personally have, um, conversations with, uh, Michael Piper, um, when issues come up. So, I would say there's a, a really good, uh, communication between the departments.
Okay. Um, one of the, um, questions I've been getting when I visit various, um, businesses around the city, um, the concern in reference to clearances, where, uh, for example, you have a restaurant which has a liquor license and they need certain type of information provided for their liquor license, and they can't get the clearance from revenue. And there's been other situations like that where various business entities are waiting on revenue to get things cleared up. Um, I know Mayor Kenny coming into this administration talked about making the city more business-friendly. Um, what steps are we taking to take those various steps to make it easier to do business in the city of Philadelphia?
Okay, uh, specifically with the tax clearance system, I was made aware when I came on in January of the problems, that there have been some issues with delays in, uh, tax clearances. So, we're working with that, um, we're looking into what, what's causing those, and we will resolve that problem. The goal always is with tax clearances, is for that to be an expedited process. What we want is when we issue a tax clearance certificate, and that's tax, that's a certificate that the taxpayer can use indicating that everything has been paid, but when we give an indication to a taxpayer that they are not compliant, then we give them a phone number to call. And the expectation is when they call that phone number, someone in the tax clearance unit will be able to tell them exactly what deficiencies they have and what they need to do to clear them up and actually expedite that process. And to the degree that that hasn't been happening, um, you know, that would be troubling and we will see that that is not the case. Um, in, in a broader sense, um, we have, uh, and this is brand new, I mean, just as of a week ago, but I met with, um, Harold Epps and, uh, heads of other departments, and we've created a, a cross-functional working group, which is going to actually break down into subgroups into various categories and with the goal of making it easier for businesses to do business with Philadelphia. So, that is in its infancy, but that has just started and, um, you know, we're expecting a lot of that, and, and even at the first meeting, we dove right, you know, it wasn't just a, a brainstorming issue, but we dove right into some of the issues and established some subgroups. So, I think you'll see, um, some improvements come out of that group.
Along those lines, for example, in my previous capacity of working for Council on TSCO, when we had a issue that would come to our office, and often when issues rise to a council office, like a district office, it's because a taxpayer got frustrated because they went to this department and they said, "Well, go to that department." Well, it's not our issue, talk to revenue. It's not revenue's issue, it's LNI or some other department. And so, by the time they get to the district council office often, or at-large office, they've gone through what I call sometimes the wheel of unfortune of going to various departments. So, for example, when I dealt with constituent issues in Council on TSCO's office, we often dealt with Lisa Walker in revenue, who did an excellent job of helping us expedite the issue and getting the issue resolved. From a business perspective, why can't we create some type of a specialized unit that can help business owners to really pinpoint, get to their, get their issue addressed quickly so that way they don't go through this wheel of unfortune?
Yeah, um, that's a, uh, that's a, an excellent idea and one that's been presented to the department, um, before and one that we're, we haven't counted out, but we're just struggling with how to really structure that office as, in terms of whether that be a taxpayer advocate, an ombudsman, a problem resolution office. We've seen those, and just the, the, the concern is that we would use existing, if we did, used existing staff to do that, that would short-staff us in our regular operations or that we wouldn't have the ability to adequately staff that problem resolution unit. So, that would just lead to more frustration. So, my point, I think it's something that is, you know, is, is still under consideration, but it really needs to be carefully, um, constructed in order for it to be effective. Otherwise, it'll just lead to more frustration on the part of taxpayers if we have a problem resolution office where they're still having a problem getting their problem resolved. So, um, so that's the, you know, kind of a long answer to it, but it's, it's under consideration, we just have to figure out how to, how to really structure that.
Okay, I, my time is up and I, um, do have some additional questions, but I guess my concern is, is there a process for establishing that office or will we be here next spring during budget season asking the same question?
Well, what we're trying to do is we're trying to really resolve the problems at the source and make that better. For an example, we've talked to LNI about possibly embedding a revenue employee over in LNI at, at the front desk so that taxpayer won't get sent, have to go over to revenue to clear up a problem and then go back. So, we're really looking at those ways first to reduce the problems, and then we can, would look at the problem resolution office. So, I'm not promising that this is, that is going, something that's going to happen quickly, that the problem resolution office. It's under consideration, but we really have to be careful about how to structure that.
Um, thank you, Councilman. Just follow up on the Councilman's question, um, and you know your department better than I do, clearly, but I don't think it's as difficult as you indicate because in the last administration, um, as related to developers and the development generally in the city, um, I guess Deputy Mayor, also Commerce Director, whatever Mr. Greenberger was, they created unofficially a unit called the Developer Services Unit that brought in all aspects of departments that provided assistance with planning, and it was unofficial, uh, where one, it was like a one-stop shop for developers or people who wanted to build or people who had interest in about getting zoning and all of that, all in, within one division. And subsequently, we formalized that by passing a charter change that created the Office of Planning and Development. So, with respect to the Councilman's question, I think if that's a priority of the administration, that they could just create, um, a department, um, creating the Office of Business Services for traditional businesses and not just developers, or we can do a charter change. I mean...
Yeah, I guess I was, I was referring to actually structuring...
We have already set a precedent on how you do that.
Understood. I wa, I was really referring to structuring it within the Department of Revenue. Um, you know, the IRS has a, a problem resolution office, so that was kind of the model I was looking at.
Okay.
It's within, they also have a taxpayer advocate with, which is external, which may be more what you're referring to, but I was really looking for something internal where the way the IRS process works is if you go through normal channels and you reach a level of frustration?
Well, I'm saying, no, I'm saying it was...
You contact problem resolution, and their guarantee essentially is that within thirty days, they will have that problem resolved, and then they shepherd it through the process. And there's, it's, it's twofold, in one, you wanna get the taxpayers' problem resolved, but the other side of it is to look where there was a breakdown in the system and then try to fix that so that that, so another taxpayer doesn't experience that same frustration and then thereby doesn't, also doesn't need the problem resolution office.
Okay, all right, well, uh, I concur with the Councilman's, uh, assessment. We hope we're not asking the same question next, next spring, uh, during budget hearing, so hopefully you can get that done. If you need any assistance from us, please let us know.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilwoman Bass.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome.
So, just a couple more follow-up questions. Can you talk a little bit about tax amnesty programs?
The city conducted a tax amnesty program back in 2010.
Twenty-ten was the last time we did one?
It was twenty-ten, yes. Uh, it was tax amnesty. Um, I believe that program brought in about seventy-three million dollars. Very successful in terms, I think, of what it was designed to do, which was it sent to fill a budget gap or to, uh, to, to meet a need for cash flow, but after post-amnesty, in looking at the analysis, what we realized is that the amnesty program really just brought in money that would have come in. So, it just, it kind of shifts, and my concern with amnesty programs in general is they tend to undermine compliance. And we've made great strides in tax compliance since our amnesty program. One of the things that we stressed during that amnesty program was essentially that this was the right time, your last chance, we haven't done one, we hadn't done one for about twenty years prior to that, and we really stressed that we were not going to do another one. And so, we, we did that for two reasons. One, to optimize people taking advantage of that amnesty program, but also to send the message that unlike some other jurisdictions, we will not be doing successive amnesties because what some jurisdictions have fallen into the trap of is they run amnesties fairly frequently, and then taxpayers come to expect amnesty programs, and it starts to undermine your compliance effort. They, they don't pay because they wanna get the deal, and they're waiting for the deal. The other thing that we, we sensed during amnesty was a level of frustrations from taxpayers who pay because they feel as if, um, taxpayers who did not pay are being rewarded for non-compliance. So, it's a very, amnesties are very tricky in terms of how they affect compliance, but when a jurisdiction is strapped for cash, sometimes they, they will rely on an amnesty program.
Um, I, I understand, uh, the ideology behind it and, and the thought process that says, um, you know, you, you sort of undermine yourself in your collection, but I, I do think that there is something to amnesty programs, that they bring in revenue that, I know you said that you thought they bring in money that was coming anyway, and I think that they bring in money that was not coming because usually if you're in, uh, if you're trying to get amnesty, you have some level of interest and penalty that is, um, unmanageable, um, difficult for you to, um, see your way out of that situation. And so, if there's amnesty, there's an opportunity, uh, to make yourself right with the city of Philadelphia because you can shed some of that. And so, I don't think that it was money that was necessarily coming in anyway because if I can't figure out, figure my way out of this situation, um, you know, I'm just, just kinda stuck here. But with amnesty, some of the interest, do you remember how much of the interest and penalty went away the last time we did an amnesty program?
I believe we abated all of the penalty and half of the interest. One of the other challenges that we have with amnesty is you essentially shut down business for a period of time when you're ramping up. I mean, taxpayers hear that there's gonna be an amnesty program, so they stop paying in, in, as they wait for the amnesty program. And then it's highly, it, it relies heavily on technology.
Mm-huh.
So, uh, and it, having gone through it, it's really hard to have understood before going through it. Our program was fifty-four days, and we, from day one through our, uh, media outreach, encouraged people to come in early and, you know, take advantage of it, but like taxes in general, the majority of the taxpayers came in in the last week to ten days.
Mm-huh.
And it was just a huge onslaught of checks, and it's very chaotic. So, then there's a very long cleanup period afterwards to get all of that money applied. And during that period, you really have no collection efforts because you don't know who has paid, who hasn't paid, until you can clean up all of that. So, I'm not, I'm, I'm just saying this to, you know...
It sounds like we don't have the capacity to do amnesty, which will bring in additional revenue. It, it sounds like that's...
Internally, we, we do not. So, when we did the amnesty in twenty-ten, we brought in a vendor who, um, who did have the capacity to do an amnesty. They had just...
Okay.
Done, um, New Jersey's amnesty, which was hugely successful, one of the reasons we selected the vendor.
So, why do we have to shut down if we can bring in a vendor?
Well, shutdown may have been the wrong word, it's just that there's so much money comes in during that period that it takes quite some time for it to be processed, be reflected in our system, and during that time, we can't be out doing any aggressive collections because we don't know if the person had paid during the amnesty. You have to wait until all that money is processed, and that does take some time.
There's gotta be a better way. There's gotta be an easier way for us to collect money in the city of Philadelphia. We've got to make it more user-friendly. I mean, we have a system that's so antiquated, it's, it's really ridiculous. And I'm not blaming you, you didn't put the system into place, but, uh, you know, we're looking at you to help us fix it and to make it a system that's gonna work for everyone. And right now, it just, it just doesn't. It's a broken system. Even with the improvements that you've made, and I thank you for making those improvements, uh, we still have a very long way to go, and not just a ways to go in terms of technology, but also our thought process about collecting money in the city of Philadelphia and how important that is, and that we can't send people away. If people come, if, if folks come in and they have a tax debt, um, you know, there really needs to be someone that sits with them, who understands the situation, who does some sort of an analysis in terms of what this person can pay and works it out. We have to work these things out, so.
And I, I agree with you there, and there is a place where we can make immediate change. So, we are looking at that piece.
Okay.
Sitting down with the taxpayers and being able to make it easier to get into agreements and not turn people away that come in wanting to pay. And I think that, you know, we have some, some technological advancements coming on now, and another piece is we have a very antiquated, um, system. Our tip system, which I'm sure you've heard referred to, is very antiquated, prevents, presents us with great challenges. Um, I believe in fiscal seventeen, there's going to be a, a replacement study, so hopefully, um, we're going to make some progress towards replacing that system, and I think that would go a long way because most of these modern systems make it easier for taxpayers to pay their taxes and make it easier for revenue departments to collect.
Can I ask just one, one quick, one quick question? Mr. President?
Sure.
If, if I were to walk over to municipal services right now and to ask anyone who's waiting for help from revenue, how would they rate the services that they've received, that they were getting ready to receive or have received? How do you think that person would respond?
No, it, it really depends on the, the person. I will state that I was...
Overall, I know everybody's got a different opinion.
I was very, I, I went through, I, I did a review of the surveys, and I was very surprised. And, and maybe I shouldn't say that I was surprised, but I was very surprised at how much taxpayers expressed satisfaction this year during tax season. We had a lot of taxpayers, and we'll, we'll be happy to share the information with you.
I would really like to see that.
But that's not to state that there weren't taxpayers that were highly distressed because of things that took place, and so, we looked at all of those and took those serious and brought, we're bringing those back to managers to look at how we can improve the process so that doesn't happen in the future.
As you organize that, Ed, I think it would be helpful to share it with City Council. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Chair recognizes Councilman Heenan.
Thank you, Council President. Good afternoon. Um, you had mentioned in, in your, uh, in your testimony about enhanced communications. Enhanced communications? Enhanced communications in partnership with OIT. Is this enhanced communications with, with taxpayers or just other departments?
Both.
Both?
We're looking to do outreach to, we do a lot of outreach to, you know, through community organizations, to tax professionals. We really try to get the word out there about changes, what's going on in the revenue department. about changes, what's going on in the Revenue Department, tax changes. And this is all in, in effort to increase voluntary compliance, but we're also looking to enhance communications with other departments. So I mentioned OPA, LNI, OIT, all those departments and others.
Can you work with OIT to find ways to share your information and to share it, at least with other departments while they're, you're still respecting and honoring the confidentiality, protection of the information that's required?
Yeah, and that's always, that's our effort. If, if, if we can share the information, we do-
Because that's what we struggle with.
Yeah, and there's, I understand. And there's times when we, we look at the data and look for a way that we can share the data that won't violate confidentiality. Where we, where it becomes tough is when the, the data being requested is in a form that clearly violates confidentiality. And then there's, there's not much we can do. But where we can aggregate data and that's useful, we'll do that. Where there's other ways, we're definitely open to sharing data. We're not trying to hoard our data. We're just have to be very respectful of confidentiality requirements, especially, you know, we're using third-party data. A violation of confidentiality could jeopardize our ability to get data from the state of Pennsylvania, from the IRS, and we're highly reliant on that data for our collection efforts.
Okay, so if, you know, somebody in, in this body requests information, do you, do you respond and let them know that it's, it's confidential or just there's no response?
We will respond and let them know that it's confidential. And then we will try to work with them in, in a way to-
To try to find-
To find a way to give them-
What we're looking for?
Exactly.
Without breaching the confidentiality?
Absolutely.
And when you put the processes in place and you better communicate with the general public and other departments, would you be able to come back? I mean, is there a timeline for that? Do you have a timeline for?
It's ongoing, so there's not an, an exact timeline, but-
Maybe during the summer, if you can, after this budget process, would you be able to brief council just on, you know, in, in the individual basis, on an office basis?
Sure.
You know, for, this way, you know, the senior staff have, you know, know what we can request and what we can't.
We can do that.
And, you know, and we work, and I just want to note for the record, I mean, we work pretty well with, with Revenue, but, you know, we do run into, over the years, you know, some confidentiality issues.
Yeah, and, and hopefully, the data warehouse, which will be going live in February of next year, will also help us. That's going to be a repository for a lot of data. So some data that's really hard for us to access now will be easier. So some of, it's not always confidentiality. Sometimes it's just that the information being requested, we don't have readily available. And in order to dedicate the resources, you know, it's difficult.
And I think everybody hopes that the data warehouse finally comes online-
Yeah.
With that data sharing information because, I mean, I think it's that kind of public information that, you know, we would like to share, right, and to utilize and to better, you know, provide effective services, you know, from, from our offices in conjunction, working with partners with, with you as, as a department. So we saw an increase in the realty transfer tax. Is that correct?
Yes.
And is that from the number of sales or higher value of sales?
It's, I would think it's, it's both. It's increased sales and also that the values of the, the properties are higher.
We'll, we'll check with, you know, OPAs as, as well on that. The real, the realty transfer tax is paid at settlement. Is that correct?
Yes.
And at all, at all private settlements?
It, it should be paid, but it, it's not always paid. There is non-compliance even in real estate transfer tax. So we do have a, a compliance effort within Revenue where we review deeds and transactions, especially large transactions, to see if they were claiming some type of an exclusion from the realty transfer tax that was not appropriate. And in that case, we'll assess it and then try, you put it into our collection effort.
Does it automatically become delinquent status or just non-compliance?
It would go into delinquent status.
All right, and your rate of collections on that? I mean, I, this wasn't a question I was going to ask. I'm just kind of rolling with it as, as we're, as we're having the conversation.
We do have the compliance rate. We have that on real estate transfer tax. It would be a very high rate though.
Well, while you're looking for that, are there any other city documents at the table during settlements that you're aware of?
Are there any other?
Because I'm getting to somewhere. So you have the, the transfer tax. So are you aware of any other City Philadelphia documents that are at a, at a settlement?
I don't, I don't know the answer.
All right. So what I'm trying to get to is, I think there's a real opportunity for education there. Education that at the moment of sale, the person may be a first-time property owner or a first time in the city, it would be a great opportunity to remind people that they need a renter's license, right, and, and HIL rental's license. If they get licensed and if there are other certain expectations and responsibilities that come with owning a property in the city, I think that would be a, a perfect opportunity to do so. And is there a way to partner with other agencies to think this thing through? You know, I mean, think this out, like, you know, with LNI, just where we can get some additional information out at that moment, at that time at settlement?
No, that's a, that's a good idea. And we can, we can definitely brainstorm-
Just want to throw out there, especially when-
We can definitely brainstorm around that. We also, we had at one time, and I don't, and we could, you know, revisit it, is one time we had partnered with, I think, the Philadelphia Board of Realtors too, to, so that we gave them like collateral information that they could hand to taxpayers who, you know, essentially put in the, the jacket when properties were going for sale in Philadelphia, which just explained a little bit about the taxes.
And that'd be great, especially when it comes to vacancy.
Yeah.
Right, and, and accountability for what the, you know, education and what the law is. So, I mean, if there are some other, you know, I'm interested in, you know, pursuing these conversations, you know, working with other departments just to see if there are other ways where we can deal with vacancy blight and/or, you know, responsibilities of a property owner and, and what's required from the city. This way, we don't have to, it, it just, you know, hopefully, even if it increases our delinquency or accountability by, by 10% or, or more, I think at that time, at that moment, folks will be educated.
Yeah. And I think we've made some advancements with title companies to make it easy for, easier for them to identify delinquencies, water and tax delinquencies, so that those are getting paid at settlement. So, because that is, that's a great opportunity for us to, to collect.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. And a few more questions I wanted to ask. But I wanted to mention, first of all, I appreciate in the first four months of my term here, your cooperation. You guys have been great in cooperating, so thank you very much for that. I also want to thank you for the great job on the EITC outreach you guys did this year. The website, everything, it was great. And my, my question on that is, do we have any kind of statistic yet that compares 2014 to 2015 on the earned income tax credit of how much was left? I know that in prior years, we left 100 million. Do we have any idea what we may have left this year?
I think it's too early to really tell how much was claimed. It takes some time to get that kind of information from the IRS. What we're encouraged by is the, the volume of taxpayers we've had through the free tax return sites. And, and we're hoping that that's definitely going to make an impact in that money that was left on the table.
I got to tell you, every, I went to a lot of places to speak about it. Every place I went, Revenue Department was there with the brochures, with the information. It was great. It was very good.
Thank you.
A couple other questions I just wanted to ask. I'm not sure if you have the answer. I've been told that on the delinquent taxes, 40% of the delinquency is from, from people who don't live in the City of Philadelphia. Do you have any kind of data about that?
We do have some data on that. We'll look, yeah.
So for the real estate taxes, when you're going by mailing address, about 6% of accounts and 5% of the amount of money due is for properties where the mailing address is outside of Pennsylvania. For properties, and that's about $16.7 million, including interest penalties, everything else. And then for properties that are outside of Philadelphia but within the state of Pennsylvania, the mailing addresses of about 7% of properties that are delinquent and 5% of the amount due, so that's another 17.4 million. Those properties where the mailing address is inside Philadelphia or the property itself, that accounts for 88% of the delinquency and 90% of the amount due.
Do you have any breakdown of what the delinquencies are based on owner occupied versus investor?
Yes. Okay. So 92% of homeowners are current on their real estate taxes. The remaining 8% is 20, around 20,000 delinquent homeowners. And so that's 22% of all real estate delinquencies. So those homeowners owe $97 million, and that's about 20% of what's due.
So, but of the delinquency, what percentage are investors versus, let's say, people that live in the home themselves, owner-occupieds?
So owner-occupied is 22% of the delinquent properties.
So the majority of the delinquencies, 78%, are investors?
Well, they may be, I mean, they may be businesses. So we know homeowners, which is basically, do they have homestead? Are they in loop? Or were they a property that used to be eligible for homestead, but when you no longer could have homestead in abatement, they lost their homestead?
So you're basically, in simple terms, one out of five delinquent properties are owner-occupied?
Correct.
And the other question on the delinquent taxes that are about 336 or so in real estate and the water and sewers, 125 to 150, do we have an idea of the ABI value of those properties?
The market value of the property? We could, that's something we can get.
We can also send me the figures or send it to the Chair, Council President on the delinquency numbers that you just cited. Those are very interesting to me, all that information. So the ABI value is important because we'll know our collectability rate. You know, if it's X, if it's $5 billion against $500 billion owed, we know we're going to collect that, especially also on the commercial trash. Because the value of the leanable assets depends on the value of the asset we're leaning. So I'd like to know on the 32 million, what the values are of that debt, of those properties. Question on fees. Last week, President of the courts were, were testified and had a question, and I think their court budget's roughly 150 to 160 million. And I was told that the state supplies like 60 million, the City of Philadelphia writes a check for 56 million, and the fees are 34 million. And when I questioned the last time the fees were raised, it was 1984, okay? And I think inflation's about 140% since 1984. And I think there was a court order in the 90s that said the court system has to be self-sufficient. We shouldn't be paying any money. My question to Revenue is, there's fees from the court system, Sheriff's Department, LNI. Do you monitor to make sure that those fees are kept up to date and kept up with inflation? Because on the court system, for example, if it was kept up from inflation, we're looking at probably another 50 or 60 million that would take us out of funding the court system.
Yeah, that's not something that Revenue has looked at, so I'm not sure where the responsibility is.
Who would be responsible for, because it's Revenue, who's responsible for monitoring fees and keeping them up to date?
I don't know. We can find that out for you.
Okay, all right, thanks. So that's a big area of money. We're talking about needing money for pensions or that we could close the gaps with that kind of a collection rate.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Jones.
Thank you. Quick question. We passed a bill, an ordinance that became law, that talked about the itemization of bills. Particularly, the spirit of the legislation was for seniors who often come in making payments on bills, sometimes payment agreements, and they were very unclear about what a dollar was being applied to, whether it was penalty, whether it was interest, what, what were the different categories. And that was some years ago. And I wanted to know, and I asked you this one before-
Yes.
Where we were on the implementation of itemization of bills within your department.
Okay. And I had indicated, but I, I had said I was unsure and I would get back to you, so that I thought it may be connected to our new cashiering system. And that is the case. So that system has been significantly delayed, and we're looking at a go-live of the basic system next month. And then the, because during that process, this legislation passed, that was an enhancement to the system. So that will happen after next month's go-live. I don't know the exact timeframe, but that is the reason for the delay. It still is in the plan and that will happen. The, in the meantime, what we've been doing is, the legislation says that for any taxpayer who requests a detailed or an itemized receipt, that the department will furnish it. And we're doing that. So anyone who contacts the department and says, I want an itemized receipt for my payment, they can get that. They can get that in person. They can email us, call us, and we'll send them that receipt. For, the legislation also says that anyone paying in person at the window will get one automatically. That's the piece that we're not doing. We do give them a receipt, but it is not itemized. Anyone who, at the window, requests an itemized receipt, we will have one sent to them. So that's what we've been doing as a stopgap. And, and once the system goes live next month, then we'll start working on this enhancement. And I don't anticipate that to be long, but I'm not a technology person, so, but I can keep your office certainly apprised of the progress.
So whenever we start dealing with technology in the City of Philadelphia, it reminds me of a phrase, "With all deliberate speed and desegregation." So I'm, I'm pleased that we're moving in the right direction. But why I think that's important speaks to what Councilwoman Bass talked about, being user-friendly. The initiation of that bill and then law came from people coming to my office. One in particular lived on the 1700 block of P Street. And she was a meticulous bill payer. I mean, she, not on the 15th, but on the 1st, she was putting in stamps, putting in a paper check and paying her bills. But she wanted to know how it was being applied. And I think when we talk about user-friendly, I think when we talk about particularly our senior citizens, we, we owe the customer that at least, if, if they're earnestly trying to pay their bills, that at least they should know, this one went to the principal, this one went to the interest, and this one, I'm paying penalty before. Because they think every dollar applies to the principal. That's in their minds. So if we, if we at least explain them, to them, that that is not the case, they have a clearer understanding. You know, Sadie, Mom Sadie, she, she want to know where our money's going, right? So I think that is an important part of the process of being user-friendly. And I will, I'm not going to do a callback, but I need you to let us know when that goes live.
We will. And I think it's also important to note that that was part, that, that provision was part of legislation, which changed our payment processing procedures so that we no longer prorated payments across principal, interest, and penalty, which was very confusing to taxpayers. We realized that. So we made the switch so that the, the priority for processing the payment is to principal first. So, so that made it easier and maybe for people to understand how their money was being applied.
Thank you so much, Mr., and thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman. Chair recognizes Councilman Green.
Thank you, Council President. Councilwoman Parker was not able to be here this morning, but she had some, some questions, and I'm going to add some questions on her behalf. From, in my understanding, that we have, if a person has a delinquent realty tax, they have a separate agreement. And if they also have a delinquent water tax, that's also a separate agreement. Is there any way that for owner-occupied, for owner-occupants, if they have a delinquency on water and real estate, that those can be combined in one payment? Or is that not feasible based on our technology?
I think that's a limitation of our technology since water and tax are both in separate, maintained in separate systems, that we need an agreement in each of those systems.
Okay. Over the past couple of years, there's been some changes in how we've, you know, collected our delinquent realty taxes. As a result of those changes, have we had increased collections and has there been a decrease in the number of delinquent properties?
Yeah. I know that last year, our delinquent collections were over, for real estate, were over $100 million for the first time. So I think we are definitely making improvements in the collection of delinquent, and we're anticipating increased collections- in the collection of delinquent, and we're anticipating increased collections again for fiscal year '17.
And is there any steps for, and from your research and data, do you identify people who've been delinquent for the first time, and are there any type of initiatives to address first-time delinquencies?
Yes. There's a couple opportunities for first-time delinquents. And one of the things that we've started is for our real estate tax delinquents, first-time delinquents, we get a notice out to them earlier. We get them in with a collection agency earlier, and then before they actually become delinquent. So this is somebody who misses the March 31st deadline for real estate taxes. We start immediately making contact with those people to try to get that payment in. And in November, before that is actually going to become delinquent in January, and there'll be additional charges, lien fees, legal fees, we send them a notice telling them exactly what, you know, the ramifications of not paying are, to encourage them to get that payment in before January. And that's been, that's been a successful process.
And with this process, has there been increase or decrease in first-time delinquents?
All right. That's all I'm told. Those numbers are going down. The first-time delinquency numbers are decreasing.
Okay. There's also been an increase in the number of sheriff's sale petitions filed since 2013. Has this increase significantly impacted collections?
Yes. I think that that is also a factor that is improving our delinquent collections. We're getting more, more properties listed for sale. And obviously, the goal there is not necessarily to take the property to sale, but to, you know, encourage payment. And we're seeing that happening, and that's influencing the improvements in delinquent collections.
And do you have access to data in reference to, for example, the average number of properties sold at sheriff's sale for non-payment real estate taxes?
We do.
Okay. And what is, what is that average number that you estimate are owner occupied?
Let me see if we have that with us today.
As well as what's the average that are sold for non-payment real estate taxes?
We're averaging about 300 properties a month sold. I don't know what percentage of those would be owner occupied. I know that it would be, our best estimate, our best estimate is 12%.
No, no. 12 out of 300.
12, oh, not 12%. What percent?
So it'd be 4%. 12.
I'm sorry. Four, best estimate is 4% are owner occupied.
So also, I want to ask some question in reference to partial payments for a tax delinquency. My understanding that under, in the Philadelphia Code, under Section 19-905, that payments are generally applied to the principal first. However, when you have a person paying for multiple tax years, are they paying for, how does that work? Are they paying for the principal multiple tax years first? Or are you doing the principal interest for the more recent tax year, then you're going to the principal for the next year beyond that?
I believe that it's principal first for all tax years, but I'll get back to you if that's not correct.
And so, and that, so you basically extinguish, so if a person has multiple years of delinquency, you're extinguishing all the principal first and then interest and penalties?
I believe that's the case.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. President. I have a few more questions, but I'll wait until my next turn.
Well, we only have teed up Councilman Don, and we also have BRT before recess. So we gotta, kind of.
I'll be quick.
So, Councilman, why don't you, if you can quickly just finish your line of questions.
Okay. I want to go through the lien sale process over the past 12 months. Are partial payments made towards these, those sold liens also apply to the principal first, the same as required for unassigned city liens? Okay. The question, are partial payments made toward those sold liens also apply to the principal first, the same as required for unassigned city liens?
Yes, yes. In many instances, where the liens were sold, the debt, the entire amount of debt was sold. So the, are you referring to a payment from a taxpayer?
Right.
Yes. The same rules for payment applications would apply, would be paid from the oldest to the newest year, and you pay down principal until you exhaust all the money you have.
Okay. For liens for owner occupied residential properties, are lien purchases required to offer owner occupant payment agreements to owner occupants, the same as required for unassigned city liens?
Yes. And before I answer that, let me just state my name for the record. Deputy Commissioner Mark Amunis for collections. Your question is relating to what would happen for the person that acquired the liens. What happens is, when the liens are sold, the purchaser of the liens, I'm sorry, steps, basically steps into the shoes of the city so that they have every right that we would have with respect, and every tool that would be available for us, including for closure sale, they also have all of the responsibilities. And more importantly, the property owner is not affected by the sale. They retain all of their rights.
Are there any properties that are still sold to liens that were sold in previous lien sales?
One of the things that we did with this, we excluded any properties that were part of the 1997. We excluded all of those.
Okay. And what has happened to the city taxes against those, I think, like 6,500 properties that were sold?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
What has happened to the city taxes against those 6,500 properties since that 1997 sale?
The city taxes?
Mm-hmm.
Well, one of the rules that, what happens is, when the liens were sold, all of those years, any payment that comes in is applied first to those years. Yes. So if you have a scenario where the person has paid all of that, and there's some accounts where that has happened, where those liens have been paid, then any subsequent year after that, the city, any payment that comes in, the city applies it to the years that it has retained.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Mm-hmm. Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Council, good. Thank you. Chair recognizes Councilman Don.
Thank you, Council President. I have six or seven quickies. There is such a thing. I just want to comment on the lien sale, following up with Councilman Green. I thought the lien sales were pretty successful. And I thought that there were three steps in the process. Correct me if I'm wrong. The first step is the notice step. The second step is to make a deal or program, a plan of paying. And third step is to actually sell the lien. And in my recollection on the two sales of the week, when we noticed, we got like 50% to 55% of the people that came forward and paid. And then I think we had a lot of people come into payment plans. I think the only area where we didn't do so well was in our requirements of actually buying the lien. And I think we set the bar pretty high, and that might be an area we may want to look at if we do this again. But I think overall, it was a huge success. And I don't think the Revenue Department got enough credit for what they accomplished in that sale. I think it was a very good sale. So I just want to put on the record. Here's my quick, quick questions. I read about it in the paper, mailroom. And I know that the Controller loves the mailroom. And my question is, do you guys have that on their control?
Yes. We've made great improvements in the mailroom since we became aware of the problems. We still have work ahead of us, so we're not stopping here. We've, we've put a database in place so we can track the mail. We're getting reports. We have significant managerial oversight. We've reduced overtime. We're looking in, we've brought in additional staff, so we've filled some vacancies. We plan to increase security measures in the fiscal year. We're also bringing in, we've been talking to, and we're going to continue to talk to, experts in the mail industry to find efficiencies within that mailroom.
Okay. And on that, on that line, right now, I think when we have customers that own more than 20, 40, 50, 100 properties, when we send out water bills and taxes, we send out 100 water bills to 100, bills to the same location. Is there any way to consolidate that type of effort?
We're looking into that. So that's one of the things that kind of came out of this whole, looking into the mailroom operations. We haven't come up with a solution yet, but that's something we're looking at, how to do consolidated mailings.
And the other one, of course, is, you heard me talk about, is water, sewer, and real estate tax bills, looking at automating the billing process for that?
Yes. You know, we're actively pursuing e-billing, and that's something that we hope to have active in the early part of the next fiscal year.
Okay, great. And the implementation of the data warehouse and the case management system, you have an idea when that's going to take place, the timeline?
The case, the go-live for the case management data warehouse is scheduled for February of next year.
Next year. And the investment, do we have any idea on the investment we made, what the return will be on that investment?
So one of the innovative features of the data warehouse and case management system is it's actually a benefits-based contract, which means no matter how big a boondoggle it could be, there's no way that the vendor gets paid unless we actually generate more money. So basically, the cost of the system is about $7.5 million, but the way they get paid is 25 cents out of each additional dollar we collect up until that, up until that $7.5. They can't go beyond it, so they won't see any upside. But if the system fails to perform, they won't get any of that revenue that the system costs.
That's good. Well, I have to take a minute here, Council President. Marissa's grandfather's in the audience here. He's got to be very proud of his granddaughter here today. It's a great answer. Can I also get from you, not now, but in writing in the next couple of weeks, the taxes we billed in 1991 as a city, 1996, every five years, 2001, 2006, and 2011, just what we billed? Last question. The Revenue Department used to have a program that identified people who received pensions from the city and determined whether or not they were delinquent, just taxes that they owed the city. Are we still doing that, or have we stopped doing that?
We are still collecting. So we ran that several years ago. I'm forgetting the exact year, but 2011, we ran that project. And the identified delinquents are continuing to pay out of their pensions. We also check new employees that come into the city at the time of hiring. So we did it, it was a two-part process. We did it on pensioners, and we also did it on employees. So employees that were working here, and then all new employees that come in. And then what we're planning to do is do both of those programs again in the next, over the next year.
So, and are you allowed by law to deduct if they owe us money from their either pensions or paychecks?
Revenue is not. So that is a program that we ran cooperatively with the Controller's Office. The Controller's Office does have the authority to do that, so we would have to engage them again and hopefully gain their cooperation to revisit this. But it was a very successful program.
And you're planning on doing that by the end of this year, you think?
The end of this, what year are you referring, the end of the calendar year or the end?
16, or you want to say the fiscal year?
No. This would be probably something more likely early next calendar year.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. I'll thank you very much for your testimony. Next up, we will have the Board of Revision of Taxes.